To call this meeting to order, we'll call please Ms. Damon.
Mr. Ayers.
Here.
Mrs. Brockman.
Here.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Here.
Mr. Kenwisher. Mrs. Conkle. Mrs. Rivera.
Here.
Dr. Wugley.
Here. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to prove the agenda as presented.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Mr. Ayers to approve the agenda as presented, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Vision statement, it is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state, not in some things, but in all things, not for some students, but for all students. Welcome to our guests this evening, if you'd like to address the board regarding a non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do so, if you do, please come up to the podium, state your name, your capacity within the district, and you will get three minutes in order to address your topic, since it is a non-agenda item, we will not be able to comment on it, but we certainly do hear you. If you are going to bring up any topics, please try and refrain from naming people, especially if it's within the district, just to keep the confidentiality to all. Does anybody feel that to address the board on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, we'll go to our board members, Ms. Brockman.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate the Spartan Assembly on the Student Hunger Drive. PB was first this year again, they raised ninety-two thousand four hundred and seventy-five pounds, which is the most that they've ever raised. And together with all the other schools for our community, that constitutes eight-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-eight meals for those in need, so huge congratulations to them. And then also, I would like to congratulate the swim team on their run at state.
I know their goal was close to a hundred thousand, so they came pretty close to it, and it was a lot more than last year too.
It was really close, yeah.
And it's their effort, and then just the community general who stepped up to the plate, all the different schools that came and participated, so congratulations to the whole district for attaining that number-one spot in the area. Great, Rivera?
I have nothing, thank you.
Conkle?
I just wanted to say thank you to the PTA and the teachers for all the Halloween fun that took place with the parades and the cold. They got everyone out, and they were out there too, and I think the parties went well, and it's just such a great time for the elementary school students, so thanks for everyone that made it a fun day.
Thank you. Ms. Hoskins?
Anything for me, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Ayers?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, we can go on, Mr. Kleese?
I have nothing.
Mr. Hi?
Nothing, thanks.
Okay, Ms. Bresser?
I do, so at the last board meeting, I recognized students who were selected to the All-State Choir and All-State Orchestra. I omitted by accident the students who were selected to the All-State Band. And so like last time, Mrs. Damon will print their names in the minutes, but pleased to recognize nine students who were selected, and then another student who was selected as a first alternate. And in addition, we have two students who are selected as overall musicians and their instruments. And these students all combined will perform at the Seventy-seventh Annual All-State Music Festival with six-hundred choir members, two-hundred-and-seventy-five member band, and a two-hundred-and-twenty-five member orchestra on November eighth, which is the end of it this week.
Great, thank you. And for those who haven't watched it, they do air it on PBS, usually on Thanksgiving. And if you haven't seen it, it's an amazing concert to see kids from throughout the whole state participate in orchestra, choir, and band, so we are very proud of all of our students who've gone there, and we are able to all enjoy it if you tune into it on PBS on Thanksgiving.
And I have one other thing, our competition cheer competed at the Iowa State Cheer Championships two weekends ago. They competed in the four-A cheer and dance, and the four-A group stunt, stun group stunt received fourth place and a beautiful trophy for the case. And then cheer and dance received sixth place, and they were just point six-five points away from another beautiful trophy for the case, so it's another great turnout.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Damon, anything?
Updated personality agenda.
Okay, Mr. Struce?
Nothing, thank you.
I just have one thing, for those who didn't attend or who did attend, the musical this year, it was last weekend, and it was Beauty and the Beast, and they did another phenomenal job. And everything from the actors and the music and the pit, and the lighting and sound, and the stage set was absolutely incredible, they had to go to Sioux City, Iowa to get that. And then all the props and the people who were trying to props, it was just an amazing musical, it was very professionally done, so I want to thank the whole drama department, including Mrs. My for all their hard work on that, because it was well-attended and it was worth going to for sure. Great.
Okay, well, moving on to the consent agenda, are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to prove the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Conkle to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, general fund.
I move that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of five-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and one cent in payment of invoices presented. Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Conkle that the general fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, nutrition fund.
I move the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and ninety cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, second by Mr. Ayers that the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Elementary Junior High Activity Fund.
I move that the Elementary Junior High Activity Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of twenty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and thirty cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Rivera that the Elementary Junior High Activity Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? High School Activity Fund.
I move that high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-one-hundred-and-twelve dollars and forty-four cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Mr. Ayers that the High School Activity Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Management Fund.
The management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of thirteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ten dollars and forty-one cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Hoskins that the management fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Capital Projects Fund.
I move the Capital Projects Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of seven-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand-and-ninety-three dollars and forty-three cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, second by Ms. Brockman that the Capital Projects Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pebble Fund.
I move that Pebble Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-forty-six dollars and ninety-one cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hoskins, second by Mr. Ayers that the Pebble Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Student Construction Fund.
I move that the Student Construction Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of three-hundred-and-four dollars and twelve cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Rivera that the Student Construction Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? I have one question, so when is the projected date of completion? Do you know what that's going to be?
On the plane? I have not heard the completion of you.
I could check with Zach and Jenny, our advisors.
Okay.
I have not heard.
Okay. Are there any other questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Internal Service Fund.
I move that Internal Service Fund warrant sixty-five-sixty to sixty-five-sixty-three be issued in the total amount of thirty-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and seventy-three cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Mr. Ayers that the Internal Service Fund warrant sixty-five-sixty to sixty-five-sixty-three be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And Trust Fund.
I move the Trust Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-three-six dollars and thirteen cents in payment of invoice presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Brockman that the Trust Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented, are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Moving on, there's no old business, so we're going to go to new business, the first one is the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five district calendar, in front of you, you will have this sheet here, which is the calendar that's the old calendar right now, Mr. Struce?
Yes, so let's kind of walk through and look at our twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar, the ultimate goal, they go through and approve this at our December, I think it's eighteenth board meeting that we have, the one in December. We've currently gone through, we've shared this at IBPS with our teachers and also with our PTA presidents, it's a date, and want to bring it before you to get some feedback and thoughts looking at this. Heather has blown us up, so can I just go month by month and kind of talk about what we're seeing and kind of where we are with dates? As you'll note, first of all, we cannot start school until August twenty-third is the official date, or the day after, if it lands on a weekend, it'd be that Monday is when we can start. When you go through the calendar, you note that we are on the back end of a seven-year calendar right now, which meaning it's towards the end of the week, and you'll see that at spring break when we get to that point as well. But right now, we'd start school on Friday, the twenty-third. Why would we start with one day of school? There's some positives to that, this happened back, I think it was eighteen, nineteen, we had the same situation where we are on the back end of a calendar. And it allows us to kind of get routines set up that day, get things moving forward. And with that date, we'll kind of look at how our calendar is compressed, where are there other days if we don't start there and push to Monday, the twenty-seventh? You know, what does that, or twenty, sorry, Monday, the twenty-sixth, what does that look like moving forward? So, start day, the yellow or the orange up there, the orange would be when our new teachers are coming back for their four days of training. And then staff would come back on the nineteenth, which is the next four days, and then starting on the twenty-third. In September, very similar to what you see this year and past years with our calendar, the second would be Labor Day. And then the fourth and the eighteenth are our first and third early dismissals or early outs, to stay consistent with that, so families are aware of those dates. October would be the second and sixteenth. Our fall break, which we just concluded here two weeks ago, which is the twenty-fifth and twenty-eighth. When you look at those dates there, again, some years you might say, well, it's usually like the eighteenth and twenty-first, again, depends upon where we are in that seven-year calendar. And where, but that would be day twenty, or day forty-four, day forty-five of the quarter is the twenty-fourth of October, so that is the end of the first quarter. And then we have records day or comp day on those from conferences, and then again, Monday, everybody has off on that day there. November, the sixth and twentieth are the early outs, the twenty-seventh is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. We have been staying rather consistent with that for a number of years now to allow families to travel. Remember, we had done a study of that over the past, and there was quite a few people that were missing on that Wednesday before Thanksgiving, so we've just kept that as a day. Would not have to be a day, we could go to school on the twenty-seventh, that is a day where we could pick up one if we wanted to. In December, you can see the two early outs, and this is a unique one in terms of winter break, this is one where we don't typically see this. Usually, winter break is about a week and a half in length, but because where the holiday lands on a Tuesday and Wednesday, again, could come to school on that Monday, the twenty-third, we could come back on January third, but contractually speaking, we'd be off the twenty-fourth through January second. So it's one of those from a family standpoint, when you think about those two days, do you come to school for one day on the twenty-third, do you come on January third? Or you say, hey, families, you have two weeks off at this winter break, and it would also give you, I believe, three weekends in that span of time as well. Again, a rarity in our schedule, but does play out that way, so again, we look at compressing our calendar, you could gain two days there or a day there. January, we would have on the twentieth, which would be Martin Luther King Day. And then in February, we would have the fourteenth and the seventeenth, which would be, again, the end of a quarter. It also would be representing our break there where it's President's Day on the seventeenth. Looking through, we've done that again for a long time, also remember, February fourteenth would also be one of those days where we could potentially make up a day of school if we had a snow cancellation on or before February seventh. Kind of very similar to the message we just sent out to families here a couple of weeks ago about school cancellations and so forth. But the fourteenth could be a day where we could make up a half a day of school, or we make up a full day of school, but it would be an early out. And then our teachers stay for professional development that afternoon, and usually till around five o'clock that night on the fourteenth, if we use it for a school day. Spring break would be the seventeenth through the twenty-first. Again, people would say typically, it's typically the tenth, but again, on the seven-day, give me example, on the seven-day rotation, I'll take you to the high school athletics world or activities world. The boys' basketball state tournament is the week of the tenth through the fourteenth, is that week, that's the last week of winter sports. Usually, that would be the week before, but because we're on the back end of the calendar, that's where it pushes to. And we've always taken spring break after that is done, because spring sports would start on the seventeenth. And most of our teams, our coaches, the high schools say they will not hold practice that week so that students can travel with their families and have a week off, and then come back and just start sports on the twenty-fourth. That is why it is that week, we've been in communication with Davenport, North Scott, and Bettendorf, and I believe they are all looking at that same week as well, so we have consistency with all the districts for families who might be sharing students or staff members in either of those districts.
In the past, a lot of times, our spring break aligns also with the universities as well, do you know if that's the case here?
Do not right now, when we had a conversation with Scott, EICC, I believe they are the week of the tenth right now, they were going to revisit it though, and see if it was a possibility, but they were landing on the tenth. Again, it can vary with many universities, but that's one we have a conversation with.
It's like University of Iowa's is March sixteenth through the twenty-third.
It is, okay.
In two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you.
Same week then.
Yeah. April, what you'd see there would be the holiday on the eighteenth. And then in May, we would have Memorial Day, and graduation would be on the twenty- And then in May, we would have, um, Memorial Day, and graduation would be on the twenty fifth, that Sunday at the Vibrant Center. And right now, our last day of school is set for June sixth, so that Friday would be the last day of school. If we have additional snow days past February seventh, or additional ones before February seventh, we then could start pushing into the week of June ninth. So, again, when you look at the calendar, think about the calendar, like I said, we won't bring it back at our next board meeting, but we will in December. Um, open any ideas, but again, it's pretty compressed overall, in terms of where we are with breaks and the days that we have, just with this back end of the calendar.
Anybody have any questions on the calendar right now?
I always hate to see the last day of school on a Friday, and then we have two snow days, you know, and we have to push it to the next week, but knock on wood.
Yes.
Hopefully that won't happen.
Yeah, that's one of those where we just get, you hope, always hope that it snows on a weekend and not during the week.
Yeah.
Or it snows a little bit that we can either have a late start or still make it.
If there are any opportunity, if we would get into that situation, that we could do, where we would add like ten minutes onto the day, onto like a couple of weeks of add to make up for a day, 'cause I just feel like if we do have to go one day or two days into that week, families make, you know, vacation plans and it's, it gets really tough, and that's gonna be, it's gonna be a late one.
Yeah, the only time we've ever done anything unique was that one year when we had the polar vortex and we missed about two weeks of school.
Yes.
Then we had to look at special ways, because we were gonna be adding so many days on. You know, it's one of those when we talk to the teachers about it, 'cause again, same question gets brought up with them. You know, it's one of those where understand it, but it's like, winter break this year is a full two weeks, you know, so it's kinda nice to get that one. Um, in a year or two, and we don't have that full two-week break, that six would be more on the front side, and you gain a couple of days in there as well.
I'll get you in a minute. Um, other questions at all? I guess, you know, the, the thing to, I think, with, the thing about this sched- schedule is, number one, how do people feel about coming in and starting on a Friday? That's one of the questions, 'cause August twenty third is a Friday, and then do we do the two weeks at Christmas, which is kinda nice? And going into that, June sixth, as you mentioned, is always an issue, so, uh, are the one, the fall break that you have in October, that's usually between the first and second quarter?
Exactly correct, yes.
Okay, so, um, in the past, have we, it would be Friday on that Monday, right?
Correct.
Friday is, um, is that an in-service?
It's a work day, yep. It's an in-service for the secondary level, and then it's a records day for the elementary, and that is a day we've had for as long as I can remember. I don't know when it was when we added that Monday off as a fall break opportunity. So, that Monday was not always a day.
Yeah, 'cause I remember there was times where we did not have it. We had the Friday, but we didn't have the Monday. And so, I'm just thinking, if we did not start on the twenty third, which is a Friday, is there a way that we could make that up somewhere else along the school year? Would that be a potential, would be the twenty eighth?
That'd be a potential day, yes.
We have to weigh whether or not the break in the middle is okay. I mean, I guess when we decided this, we should talk to our families and see what they feel about starting on Friday and what their, what their, um, viewpoint is on that, 'cause that could go either way, I guess.
Yeah, like I said, we did it back, like, I wanna say it was eighteen, nineteen, had to go back and look and see, you know, really, 'cause we had the same questions back then, how, what was it gonna be like? Turned out really well, and having a day and then coming back and
Sure.
in the first day full, on the Monday then. Questions?
Any other questions from the board?
This has been reviewed, like, the staff has seen this already?
So we've just gone through IBPS, which is like our, um, teachers that come to our, uh, interest-based problem-solving session that we have. That's the first group that we've shared it with so far.
So you've got feedback that way, 'cause it is nice to have the Friday, kinda get all that routine stuff done, and then you start back your regular schedule, so I would think that'd be pretty favorable.
From the teachers.
And then you're also not adding on time at the end of the calendar.
Sure.
And, your questions are exactly what the teachers were asking as well, and going through, our PTA presidents had the same conversation. Um, I, it really came down to winter break was probably the biggest question, and people saying it's nice to have, in the end, it's nice having two full weeks, or people then.
Now, with everything kind of delayed about a week later, uh, with regard, with, which we've always got asked is the AP tests. What happens with AP tests on this year? Will there be the one week less of instruction during AP classes? As of it, or are the AP tests given a, kind of a week later than two?
I would have to look and see when that testing, I mean, that testing window is about one month of May, depending, end of April, usually first part of May. Um, we could look at that and see. January, the end of the quarter would be on January seventeenth. So you come back, you have basically
That's when the finals will be.
Correct.
Okay.
'Cause then the twentieth, that
Everything's not pushed back. Is every, everything's not pushed back in terms of AP testing time that they have for instruction, right? Am I thinking of that wrong?
Well, well, even starting school, like, they're starting, if they do the two weeks, then the school would start until January sixth.
Oh, that's true.
Usually, it's like second, the second, it's usually the third.
Yeah, that's right.
So I just was just asking about that.
It looks like the AP exams for this school year will be the first full week of May, and then the week after. And so even if they were backed up two weeks, um, next year in two thousand twenty-five, they would still hit within our, this proposed calendar.
Okay.
So your question, though, is like, how many weeks of it, of preparation do they have for a second semester course, if it's a one semester course? Before they start taking the AP test, that's always the question. Instructional time.
Other questions on the board? Okay, yeah, you had a question? Why don't you come up to the, to the podium and just state your name and
You know my name.
They can hear you.
Who I am?
Yeah, but, but you have to, for the, for the camera.
Danny Amaya, parent, taxpayer. Um, so just looking at the calendar, I see we're getting, uh, Valentine's Day off, but wanna advocate for Veterans Day off. I'm a veteran, my kids appreciate that, so, um, as a parent, I'd like to, um, I don't know how, what the process is for getting that on the agenda or whatever, but certainly recognize that for, for all the veterans.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? No, there's no motion on this, so, um, hopefully, we're gonna have to approve this at the, uh, December meeting. Yes, alright. Um, next order of business, technology update, Mr. Penney.
Hi, I'm Kevin Pennycamp, the Director of Technology here at Pleasant Valley. I've been with the district for just about six years now in this role, sixteen overall. And each fall, we have a technology update, and this year's focus, because it connects to some of the other items we're gonna talk about tonight, is about E-Rate. In the federally funded program that FCC supports with connecting schools and libraries with internet. So you can see, I, I put together a chart from the last five years that we've utilized the E-Rate program. In two thousand nineteen, that was the first year that we utilized the E-Rate when I started in this position, and that's when we did a major overhaul of our, all of our access points throughout the district. So how E-Rate works is, they take your free and reduced number that you have in your student population, and then they grant you a percentage that you can get essentially refunded on the amount of money that you spend. So, for our numbers, we get forty percent, like a forty percent rebate on what we spend in these certain categories. So what constitutes as connecting to the internet? There's a couple of things on there that I've listed. APs is your access points, you can E-Rate cabling. Um, switches, you can E-Rate as well, and then our project this year was really our core switch, which is kinda the lifeblood of our high school. That had become dated and, and really, there was so much traffic going through that with basically every student and adult having multiple devices on them. We saw that there was a lack of performance, so we utilized E-Rate, um, to replace that system. So if you look at, the total cost was over a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. However, we were refunded seventy-one thousand dollars, so the district essentially paid about a hundred and eight thousand dollars for that project. Why this is important, you can see our projections going out for the next five years as well. We have a lot of projects where we have to stay and expand our network and stay on top of replacing in a cycle for that equipment. So there's a couple of things in order to continue to get the E-Rate funding that you have to make sure that you're in compliance with. One of them is, you have to have an internet safety policy. So, it's in our board policy right now, which we're gonna be talking about here in a little bit. But we have one of those in place. However, tonight, we're gonna talk about what those updates to that policy look like. The second thing you need to do is you have to have installed a technology protection measure. And what that means is, all the devices that you have in school have to be filtered. We use the program called iBoss. And prior to COVID, we only filtered the devices on-premise. So we could essentially lock down our computers and say, you can't go to these sites, you can't go to these sites. Once COVID hit, we went to a web-based system that then allowed, if the student took the device home, then it's also filtered there too. So the, the sites that, you know, are inappropriate for school-aged kids, then that also gets filtered the same way at home as it does on-premise at school. The third thing you need to have in place is a public notice, so you have to present that internet safety plan to the public at a public hearing at a board meeting. So, one of the things that we'll have to do in the next couple of board meetings, I think we have targeted in January meeting, is we're gonna have to have a public notice, so that that can be commented on. And the fourth thing is education for staff and students. So since we're a school entity, you have to educate your students and staff on cybersecurity, safety policies, and basically our computer science standards that we've started to implement, incorporate that into the classroom. So that's kind of a short synopsis of what E-Rate does for us, and the things that we need to do in order to qualify that. So I'll pause there for any questions that you guys have around the E-Rate program.
Questions? Yeah. I have some questions, but I'll, I'll save it to the end.
So
E-Rate or not.
Yeah, so that leads us into the next part, is when we did a review, which we've been reviewing all of our board policies, we came to our internet appropriate use policy, and again, compared it to IASB, looked at what updates we needed to make to our policy. So, on this, in red, um, what we did was, we merged some of the different things, so it looks like a lot of items were struck out, but the concepts are still within the wording. So, in that first paragraph, there isn't really any changes, but we used some of the verbiage from IASB to, to clarify from that, those second two paragraphs, and we summarized it into a single paragraph. In the second part, previously to COVID, we had only issued at plusval dot org accounts, email accounts, to fourth grade and above. Um, one of the things that, that happened during COVID, and in my time here, is we ended up having to issue kindergarteners through twelfth graders all on at plusval account. Um, not because kindergarteners are emailing, but to give them access to the programs that they need through Clever, they have to have an account. Now, they're not getting onto Google on a daily basis, but it gives them access to the other programs and the way we've set that up within our system. So we changed the language to reflect that. The other thing we added in that second paragraph was, we in our school district, um, students can only email within the at plusval dot org account. So, my son Chase, he couldn't email out to, uh, my personal Gmail account. It's locked within our system. However, there are entities or domains that we do allow, we purposely allow, for example, at EICC. There's some of our high school students that take courses there, so they might have to communicate with, um, their professor at EICC. So we essentially, we whitelist anything that has an EICC domain, email address. So we wanted to make sure that was reflected in the board policy as well, so where it says, "And approve educational domains," that's what that is relating to. So, we still don't allow students to email outside of our domain to like Gmail accounts or Yahoo accounts. It's really for those educational purposes. The next, the next red paragraph there, again, is a summary of multiple paragraphs that we had in conjunction with IASB within that language. So, not really new proportions of it, but really connected to, we wanted to focus on the student section and clarify that this was the student part within red. And then the next paragraph, we took out the word student and wanted to clarify that there was an employee section as well to our internet safety policy. And then the final page of strikeouts was related to, when we were reviewing our handbooks, um, within this, there's a cellphone policy as well that was integrated into our internet appropriate use. Because all of this language is in the student handbook, we didn't feel like it was still appropriate to keep it in the board policy, because we're using the, the handbook as a reference for that. So, that's why we felt to clean this up and to summarize it, we took that out because it's referenced within the student handbook. Any questions that you have on the changes? Or the updates?
Just to clarify, like, there's one part where it says, like, we don't have control over what they're accessing on the internet, but that is not totally true, because what they are able to access is locked down, where they're not accessing inappropriate
Correct.
content. It's basically, we have control over the content that they can access. Does that make sense? Like, I don't know if I'm asking that right, but
It's more on, there's content out there that they can access that's not inappropriate, but it might be false. Content as well, so the accuracy of the content that, that they're accessing
Right.
Control that.
There might be times that something comes up that it has to be, that's not appropriate, and then they have to check it, and then we have to put it back in the system too. Sometimes where it might get through a filter in some way.
Yeah.
Um, that can happen too, so I'm not gonna say it's one hundred percent. But, Kevin then gives the address and they can block that away.
I, I mean, a common one is, it's not necessarily inappropriate, but there's the, the football game that they play a lot, the students. Uh, and it's not an inappropriate thing, but it's a game that they figured out how to use different URLs to circumvent. We have a game filter on our system, but they just add another URL to it that bypasses the gaming filter. So, again, and we're not looking for that on a constant basis, there's no way you can manage that, but those are the things.
In this Series six hundred, you know, they have the student violation aspect. Where it says, "First violation of verbal and written warning will be issued to the student. A student may lose access for a specified period of time at the discretion of the supervising teacher or owner of the school administrator." Then there's a second violation, where a verbal and written second violation notice will be issued to the student. A copy of the notice will be sent to the student's parent, and a copy provided to the building principal. See that there?
So, you're, are you referencing six oh three point one three R?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, so, in the first violation, um, why, uh, have we, how come their parents aren't informed on the first violation?
I wouldn't say they're not informed, I would say, I mean, the school handles that at that, that place. I mean, we could add that additional language.
The second violation, it specifically mentions, a copy will be sent to the student's parent, but doesn't say anything about the first violation. I think that a parent may be, maybe wanting to know, 'cause then they can maybe help make sure that doesn't happen again.
And there are times when it can, I mean, it gets, with all of these, depends on the severity of where it can be. There are times when the first violation could become a bigger infraction than just a, a, it's a, it's a written verbal warning to the kid. I mean, it depends upon what it is and what they're doing wrong.
A pu- a potential first violation, I'll use that previous example that I was talking about. They're in a social studies class, and they're on the football game instead of listening to, uh, or participating within the classroom instruction that day. So that could just lead to a first verbal warning that you're misusing technology inappropriately. It's probably not a major offense, but it's more of just a verbal warning. You're not gonna necessarily, I mean, i- unless they feel it is necessary to contact the parents, I mean, administrators still have that flexibility to do that within it. But there might be some initial warnings that aren't necessary to, to make that contact home to.
Maybe in that first violation, we can add there, you know, but when they potential home or something? Yeah, may depending upon the severity of the of the violation that way.
Cause there are, I can tell you, there are times when it's an immediate phone call home right away, and it could be a loss of privilege right away as well, the first time.
And one change on the R series, on the, I believe it's on the second page at the top. This is more of just cleaning up the language because previously it talked about files and spreading computer viruses. This is more of just updating it to specifically talk about exercising caution around attachments and hyperlinks due to avoiding the malicious software attacks or malware. It's just bringing that up to date. And that's one of those things we continue to educate our staff and students about on a regular basis due to the cybersecurity concerns out there.
Somewhat related to this, they did, yeah, we talked about this a little bit last year, but I have heard from it is hard for them to communicate with the teachers because of the block that is up with junk email with parents in the IT because they get blocked from the teachers, don't get that. And I know the remedy for that situation was to potentially use your child's email account. But some parents have sensitive material that they want or discuss or some, not sensitive material, but discussions that maybe they don't want their child to be a part of necessarily. And so I I just thought I'd bring that up and see maybe as technology advances, there's a way to put parents' email addresses. You know, we fill out those forms when we're registering students and there's a way to mark my email addresses as safe so they don't get blocked or another parent's emails as safe, you know, so they don't get marked as spam and get blocked from teachers because that email went out, but I still think that sometimes parents get upset if they don't get a response because they think, why is this teacher just ignoring my email? In reality, the teacher didn't get it. So, you know, that I see that as somewhat still problematic.
Or could you do something where, I mean, obviously that's going into a folder somewhere? Can they check like their spam folder? Like, you guys have some, every two weeks they need to, I know that's putting more on the teachers, but that might be one way to check those. Cause I know I was having a problem with the teacher and he said, oh, yeah, I saw your email in my spam folder, so or whatever. He was looking for those, so he was actually already checking. So he caught it even though I didn't know that that's where he caught it, you know?
So what I can look into, I I don't know if there's a way right now if we can pull the emails that people put in the online registration from Infinite Campus, if we can run an ad hoc report and then import those into our system. Right now, we're manually inputting those when we hear about, I think we just had one last week. There's a, and a lot of times it happens around student-teacher conferences, like they're communicating, it's like, hey, didn't you get my emails? Nope, so they talk about it, parent-teacher conference, and then the teacher makes us aware, so we whitelist it. I don't know if there's a mass upload we can do, but I can check into that and see if we could just pull all the ones that people have inputted in Infinite Campus and go from there. I I do know that the the spam folder gets very full too. I mean, there's hundreds of emails that get sent to that to avoid that. So it's not a great way. And but again, we don't have a great solution either for, you've emailed the teacher, you haven't heard back from him, now you have to follow up too. But I'll look into that to see if there's a mass download that we can do to import that into the the filter system. It's just, I, Google is interesting that way. There's a lot of great things Google does, but there's a lot of things Google does that we can't ever explain either. Like, why did it mark this Gmail as potentially malicious? And I don't have great answers for that. It's like trying to, yeah, somebody's mind and I, it's tough. We'll look into that.
So would emails in Infinite Campus be the same emails that the E News goes to?
Correct. Yep, that's how E News is generated from it. So we pull those from E News and that gets automatically added. But I can't say for certain right now if we can do that and put that into the filtering system to whitelist those.
Other question. So how secure would you say our system is? One of the things obviously that we are always fearful of is getting hacked into the system, which has happened to other districts, other government agencies, and then you're held to hostage by whoever's hacking in your system and have to pay money through Bitcoin and other ways. So I'm just wondering, how are, how would you rate our security right now? And what are things that we can do to make sure that we don't become victims to something like that?
Well, it it's interesting. I was, I was listening to a webinar today that I had tape recorded and and gone back to. What are the things you need to do for an educational program to make it secure? And again, when I look of what they're talking about with the multi-factor authentication and making sure that the permissions that you set on the users and as well as having an EDR in place or a managed EDR in place. You know, I I'm not saying I feel great because they're, the malicious actors out there are way smarter than I ever was. But we've put things in place over the last two years. And and again, Brian has dedicated the resources to be able to do that. If those school districts had those types of things in place, it would have made it very difficult for them to do what they did to those school districts. And we've learned a lot too from those school districts that had those malicious attacks. Monthly, we have meetings with the the urban education networks. And, you know, four out of those five school districts, you know, face some malicious activity. And learning from them because they can't give us the full details on exactly what happened due to the privacy issues, but they have told us, what do you do now? And so we model a lot of what we do from them and what they learned through that process. Because I would never would have wanted to go through the shoes that they had to go through too, that they're still facing because of those attacks that they faced. The other thing is, again, two years ago, we had a penetration test. And a penetration test really is you get an ethical hacker and you have them come and see what can they do to your system. And at that time, if you would have asked me, I would have felt little to no confidence that we could protect ourselves from a malicious attack. As we sit here today and with our systems admin that that we've put in place, Mr. Price, the work that he's done to get us to the point. I mean, I'm not saying that that we're 100% secure because I don't think any company in their right mind would say that they're 100% secure. But we are in a much better place today than we were 18 months ago. We're in a better place today than we were six months ago. And we're continuing to have, we have goals centered around of, what do we have to do to make sure we're as secure as we possibly can be?
So how much more do you, how much further do we have to go where you will, where you will feel really secure that, you know, we have a really good system?
I mean, a lot of it too is, is how many resources do you want to put at it? I mean, we also understand we're a school system that there's a certain level that we can get to as well. I mean, there there's things, when you look at, when we had that penetration test and the report that they gave back and they're like, hey, these are the things you need to do. We're probably 95% done with that list. So our next step would be, let's have another penetration test and see where are we with the improvements that we've made in place. So that that's either gonna happen this spring or next fall is kind of what we're on track to that, do that. But again, it it it's a cost. When you have a penetration, an external, internal penetration test like that, that's quite expensive. That's also why, you know, we've had multiple conversations with legislators on how do we pay for cybersecurity resources? We've had some great conversations about what does that look like? What are the resources that the state can provide too? So looking at, how is that funded, not just on the taxpayers, but again, that load shared and and how can we be creative that way too, so?
To any of these EC, these things that we're doing here on this sheet, does it help in moving us more forward?
So that's one of the topics in E-Rate is cybersecurity funding. So currently cybersecurity funding does not fall under the E-Rate program. However, there's a lot of push to try and get that funded. So for example, we went, we got into an 18-month contract where we cover a thousand of our devices, our Windows devices, our managed EDR is under that coverage. That coverage for 18 months costs approximately $80,000. So if we were to E-Rate that and got 40% back, you know, now it's only costing the district $48,000. So I could see in the next few years, because this is a very important topic that that people are aware of and that schools need this as well, not just private businesses. That would definitely support it, but right now it doesn't fall under the E-Rate categories.
And the other thing that I was, I learned about is, and you, I don't know all the details. I may have to have a one-on-one with you regarding it. But from what I understand, with Pleasant Valley, we have, do we only have like one line that goes out to maybe MediaCom? And then from there, we get the internet versus having a separate line or something like that? I was talking to somebody and they were like, you know, you need to look at your security of your district because you want to have some redundancy in 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 some of this stuff. You can maybe clarify that, I might not, I might not be explaining it very well. But, you know, you're subjecting yourself to maybe some some vulnerability if you only have one line?
So the the redundancy, that's a good question. And what we've been looking at and working with the city of Bettendorf is looking at redundancy with our loop. So right now, currently, we don't have a closed loop within where the fiber is run. And part of that is because the fiber wasn't run to the north end. Well, that now has been circumvented because they have a line that they finished about a year and a half ago, two years. And before we had what was called a point-to-point internet connection, which we actually had a satellite dish at the AEA and we shot the internet to a satellite that was at the junior high. And that's how the north end used to get internet up until about three years ago. So the redundancy that we're looking at is getting our loop closed so that then if there was a section that was cut off, then we could essentially, that school might be off, but then the rest of the schools in the district would still be on. So we're working with the city of Bettendorf because they've been running some new fiber lines too, especially along Central Avenue is a key part there. As far as, so that's one type of redundancy that we could look at. The other type is if you do have a second feed coming in. However, if a line gets cut, both lines typically are cut. So if you have a MediaCom line coming in and a SentryLink line coming in, a lot of times those fiber lines are in the same group. So if somebody happens to cut a line when a construction worker happens, it doesn't matter if you have redundancy or not in that case. Now, you could run it a different place. What we've learned is, and I mean, it's a cost thing. So you could have a redundant line. So right now, we're on a 2-gig system. That's how much bandwidth can come into our system. That's kind of our cap right now. To have another redundant 2-gig system means you have to have another firewall set up on a different location. And it's an extreme cost for what you would get from that. We can talk more too.
I think overall, just want to say thank you to Kevin for the work he's done with his team with this.
I think, did you have a question?
Yeah, off topic from this though, but is related to this.
You want to come up on the, to the podium?
So on on the edits that he provided. This is the first page, okay. So we talked about not accessing inappropriate sites that include child pornography or other or are harmful to minors. So I'm just confused on the messaging from the district with regard to the type of material that's being made to students. You're allowing it in books, but you're restricting it via internet. So I think we need to remain consistent on how we monitor and control this type of material throughout the district. So I think the messaging needs to be cleaned up in general, so we're consistent all around, if that makes sense.
Going back to what Kevin was saying in terms of the work that he has done with E-Rate, it has saved us a lot of money over the last few years of his work and dedication in five years. The other piece I would say is that when you look at going back to cybersecurity, Kevin has done a great job of reaching out to other districts, reaching out to professionals and saying, where is that level of? Cause it's a rabbit hole. You could keep spending more and more and more. It's like, okay, where do we get to the point where we feel pretty confident that we're pretty strong? Can you always get better? 100%. But it's that balance of where do we go and how do you spend the money on on that part of it? So again, just feels good about where we are and just continue to look for E-Rate possibilities for us to keep saving money moving forward. Cause technology's not getting any cheaper, that is for sure, so.
Yeah, I want to just, I would thank you very much, Mr. Kevin, for for finding the ways for us to get these initiatives done and having it be cost-effective for the district and also just your diligence on our whole technology. I mean, you know, with all the schools and the media districts, thank you very much for for keeping us as safe as possible. All right, moving on to the next larger business is gonna be policy board updates. And that is, Mr. Struce?
Yes.
For the December desk audit.
Correct, thank you. As we get ready for our December 15th desk audit that we put together to turn to the state every year, parts of that are some board policies that we have to submit that the state asks to see at different times. This year, there are three policies that they are asking to see that we have to update, if it changes from IASB. The first one that you see here, we currently have a policy, it is 401. It's called selection and appointment. The state has added to that qualification, recruitment and selection is their new title for this one. What you'll see by the biggest change from our current policy is right where the cursor is right now, it's called IowaWorks.gov. A year ago, well, at the end of last school year, they changed over from, we used to have Teach Iowa and now use IowaWorks.gov as our place to, for people to sign up for positions, advertise positions and so forth. So that's the application process across the state. So that is why that is an update in this board policy that we'll be submitting to the state on December 15th or before when we get the process done. But it just goes through and talks about qualifications that we're looking for. The other thing that they changed would be, we used to use the terminology certified employees. And in this policy, now they've changed everything to be a licensed employee minus the administrators, which is the 300 series, that's a separate series in itself. So in the 400, when you see licensed employee, that means typically our teachers and some other positions, maybe such as a counselor or a teacher librarian, different ones where they are licensed, but may not necessarily a teacher by license. Cause a counselor does not have to be a teacher. So that is the first one there. The second one that you can read through would be, it's called, again, used to be called the evaluation criteria for certified employees. It now just says licensed employee valuation. The first two paragraphs are new with IASB verbiage, kind of a introduction to the purpose of the evaluation. The part in black is exactly what we had previously, and those are the eight Iowa standards by which we use to evaluate staffs, so that does not change at all, the same ones we've had. And then just the last paragraph there, again, just different verbiage from what IASB, from what we had previously. Again, just replacing our current 406 with this new one called licensed employee valuation. The last one that we, that is different from what we have right now that we're submitting is called attendance requirements. We had, this one was 501.1. A much shorter version is what we had. I would say basically what we had in our current policy, if you go back and read 501.1, is about the first three sentences to this in terms of being in school between the age of six or over six and under the age of 16 for compulsory attendance requirements. So this IASB has added some new language here. Really what it just talks about, students have to be in school minimum of 180 days or 1,080 hours, which is the number of days that we have and the minimum hours that we have there. You can see students who would be exempt from this policy, who live in our district but could be exempt. As you can see there, there's different reasons why, depending upon if they're attending a different school or they're homeschooled, again, that would be an exemption from this that we are not tracking. And then at the end, it talks about, should a student be truant, the process that they go through in terms of the building principal, working with the family, putting contracts in place. And if the contract is not adhered to, then at that point, it can go to the county attorney for mediation of which the superintendent does need to be a part of that mediation process that the county attorney would lead if we ever got to that point of truancy charges. So it just walks through general requirements, who's exempt, and then the process, should you have to pursue truancy? So that is the attendance requirement policy. And that would be the last one that was different from what we're submitting or has to be updated before this desk audit is submitted. before this desk audit is submitted.
Question for the board? So in the past, uh, when they had the review, if there was, I believe it was more, 10 days, I think, or more, they got a letter home. Then after that, that was Monday, maybe after 20 days, there was a phone call made maybe to an officer just to investigate the home, make sure that that was okay. Is that still in place or?
It is, so that's in our handbook, it's a 6, 9, 15 days. Uh, what you would see, critical absent is 10%, so 18 days or more is considered obsessive or excessive absence. Um, so we send an initial letter typically at six days of absence. Um, and then the second one would be a nine-day letter, which is again typically a letter, but maybe a reach-out phone call. And then the 15 one, depending on what has all transpired over that time. Then it could be a meeting with the building principal, school resource officer, counselor, parent, student to kind of put a plan in place. Um, there are times though, when you look at it, it might not be a rigid 6, 9 and 15 because of say, um, a death in the family or something that comes up that we say, hey, we understand you're gone for two days because of this, we might send a letter on day 17 then. Again, it's trying to be in communication, understand the situation um, as we go through that and trying to find ways. And again, it's not trying to turn someone into truancy, that's not the goal. The goal is to help the student be connected to want to be at school.
And this is just, this policy is just saying that we, what a requirements are basically and the exceptions to, to the rule.
Correct, yes.
Other questions? Okay. Um, so there is no movement on that either. So that really concludes, so we didn't really have to be open to it, we just, we will be doing a lot more in December with regards to the calendar and some of these other policies. Um, so does anybody have, anybody else have anything else for the go to the order? Because our next meeting is gonna be, uh, let's see here, Monday, November 27th, which is the Monday after Thanksgiving at 6:00 PM. We have our ISB convention this week on Thursday. So for those of you who are attending, you should meet with Debbie to make sure that you have all the necessary information for the meeting. And that's really about it, is there anything else for the go to the order?
Just remember, on the 27th, or November 27th, the next one will be the organizational meeting. Jody, that'd be the one, where it'd be your last one for sure.
I, I have it right now.
You do have it right. And then we'll wait for Candace to see final results tomorrow as well. And hopefully we'll have some more information there, but the organizational meeting would take place at our next meeting on the 27th.
Is there anything else for the go to the order?